One second, a video will come up.
And do it.
And Laura. Yes, sir.
So it is 3:00 PM, it's June 12, 2024, and this is the regular meeting of the Wood Creek City Council that I am calling to order this time. I'd like everyone to rise for a moment of silence and remain standing with their place. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and God's just for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the three factors, one state, the majority, and individual. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, you know, it's like, I would like to leave. I'm nervous that we changed the text, but. All right, real world, please.
Mayor Jeff Raskin. Mayor Lieutenant Deborah Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Linaeah Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Bremer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Here.
Councilmember Christopher Richardson.
Here.
First order of public comments, it looks like we have beer. All right, let's start with people in room, Ms. Webb.
Great.
So remember, 30 minutes.
Yep, I have three, three items that I'd like to just have as a, and some people weren't here for the informal meeting to talk about Deerfield Drive. First thing I'd like to read is a statement from one of the council members that was not present at that meeting. Because of TOMA, only two council members can attend this informal meeting. I, along with two other council members, were not invited. Instead of being obstinate, I will leave the premises so that the citizens can be heard if they wish. I'm very concerned regarding the process of Deerfield, Deerfield paving. I only hope that you receive honest answers in your quest for information this evening. Thank you, Bob Hamrick. Second, I would like to request that any future meetings related to Deerfield Drive be posted as town hall meetings, specifically so that Linaeah could be present at those meetings, since it sounds like she's pretty active in the road kind of thing. So I would like to have that be thrown out there. I understand part of the process tonight is to talk about an interim city manager. But I'd like to see if there's a process for that. I've got 40 years of business experience. I've been a CEO of a company. I'm very well qualified, and I might be interested in being the interim city manager. So I'd like to see that there's a process for that to see how we, how we figure that out.
Would you pay Deerfield?
I would pay Deerfield. I'm going to be on top of the project for sure. That would be my note.
Got the job.
Thank you.
What's your name again?
Brian Webb.
Brian Webb, okay.
That is it, thank you.
All right, next on the list is Iris Romo.
Hi. I did not plan on speaking. But I thought maybe I should. I've been wanting to for a long time. I found out just a few months ago that everybody on this maybe, maybe two are volunteers. And I, I'm also a volunteer, having two years. And I am just amazed at how progressive, attentive, kind, thoughtful people are. And I'm not just making that up. I called this morning to talk about branches that hadn't been picked up. And there were already an agenda, when it was interim, it had managed to be picked up. I don't think I have ever lived in the city where things were intended to be pursued. And I want to thank each of you for what you do. I, I don't know that you get much appreciation. And so here it is. Thank you. Good work.
Mr. Jacobson, did you want to?
I would, I would want to refer to Agenda Item 25, but I thought maybe they could move it up.
Uh, no.
No?
Okay, you want to wait for 25 or you want to stick down?
I think I will.
You can stay right back there.
Right, great.
About where you were.
This, that's the.
Wrong step.
Is that where I get the good, right?
Right there.
Can you look up there? You can see yourself, you're missing your golf bat.
Uh, yeah, I see this, this got that short lens off. I saw that announcement on, or the Agenda Item 25, and it bothered me a bit because it was referencing an individual at City Hall. And you, you stated very well, there are people down here that do a very good job. And one of them is our city secretary Suzanne. I've had the fortune or misfortune for being here 15 years. I went through some really good mayors, some not so good mayors. I went through a couple of city managers. Last week, week before last, I was really surprised when I called down to City Hall. And I found out that we didn't have a city manager any longer. It distressed me a great deal. We are a little town. But we seem to have sometimes big town problems. And none of them I've seen that are, we're not capable of fixing. I've seen some of the people, I was so pleased when we got rid of some of the slalom trees down our street so we could drive down there without having an accident. But we've got people, as you said, do such a wonderful job. The one lady, she helps and everybody down the corner, and she keeps everything straightened up, just really pleased. But I saw in earlier places in the agenda that there were some notes that they were talking about an award or something. And yet I didn't see the idea that an award is being presented to Suzanne tonight. And I felt like one should be. I've been here many times when we give awards to constables, the mayors, to various people on city council. I can tell you this. Suzanne has been here in this position, I think, just about three, maybe four years, something like that. And if I've ever needed something, if I could get through to her, I'd ask the question, when are we going to do this? When, I got an answer. And that wasn't always the case in the past. Now, I, a lot of people didn't like her. I, of course, I liked Barbara back in the day. Barbara would kind of run town. But that's why, I'm just saying that whatever the conversation is tonight about Suzanne, I hope it comes with an award. The other is that, I'm going to reverberate you a bit, it's along the same line. It's placement of individuals and people who look after the good of the entire community, of the entire community. And for that reason, I, I'm one of the first ones to tell you that we need to hire a city manager. And city managers, there is a criterion that's out there. There is a school to attend. It doesn't mean that somebody couldn't come in and be a city manager and get the schooling. But we don't want somebody, I've met the people at City Hall here who thought they could be the city manager. And I can tell you straight out, they can't. It takes a lot to manage City Hall. A year ago, approximately, well, about, we had a bond, we're spending money. We've got a situation where we've got to monitor that money, and I want to make sure that that is being handled properly. And the one that does it and takes the onus off of the mayor is that he can go to the mayor, a city manager, and say, these are what we've got to do, this is what we've got to pay. What do you think, and the mayor, and the mayor, in fact, will help us. So if that's, I, I hope that everybody will understand that I'm here, here not to complain, but to encourage and endorse.
Thank you. We do have three, three submissions that were, that were emailed in. I will read this. Welcome, I'm. I will read this as clearly in as I can. I don't know if I can get it in three minutes, but I'll give it.
They're split based on.
No, no, this is the one, this one. I'm asking for, this is from Camilla.
What?
Millshed. I'm asking for permission to have this read into the record at the beginning of the meeting schedule on June 12 at approximately 6:30 PM. In addition, I would like to speak regarding a few items on the agenda. I would like to speak prior to each Agenda item listed below, 7, 8, 9, 10, 15, and 25 respectively. So we'll just break that. To be frank, I've always been the glass of half full typically. Unfortunately, with the debacle of the paving issues of right of the aisle with regard to driveway and some various inconsistency with required permits prior to April of 2022, I am paying attention. I feel that in the last couple of months, the agenda items in general are very vague, too vague for comfort with the unexpected designing of the recent city manager. I have concerns about the temporary employment of Jim Burley, who is a fairly common name when it comes to local general contractors. I'm concerned that it would be difficult to fulfill a full-time position even in a temporary capacity using city funds widely. There's a concern when there are plenty of qualified candidates in which loyalties would naturally be in his own business. I would also think it would be a complex of interest perhaps, respectively. I find it puzzling that no application credential resume dossier pertaining to disposition of his business or professional career qualifications were missing from recording packets numbers 7, 8, 9, and 10. Has this been addressed by our legal counsel? Another issue number 15, resident applications for the advisory board members that all their personal information in which every one of them were marked that they wish not to have their personal information shared to the public should have been read back as prior to posting the agenda package on a public website. I respectfully request that this be read with Agenda Item Number 25. So hold that for 25. That was the only item that was marked, I guess, it felt. This is for Agenda Item 25. And we have an Agenda Item 25 with the 8, 9, and 10. So actually, I wasn't really sure what to do with Mrs. Shedd's reading. I, I got about halfway through that one. So we will come back to this on, at 25. And I will do Robin Down when we get to 8, 9, and 10, and then also have some 7, 25, so. All right. So moving on from public comments, the next item of business is the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move item two out of the incentive agenda into the regular agenda.
Second.
All right.
Mayor, I move to approve item one.
Second.
Oh, sorry, I should do one of them, the other. You have to vote center.
Yeah, so let's.
He can just move that item.
Yeah, it's just moved. No, that's not wrong. So you want to approve on one?
One.
Okay. Signed by Mayor Lieutenant Hines to approve the regular city council meeting from May 27. And any discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you. All right, so Councilmember Bremer will take the council minutes from May 29 as part of the regular agenda down into. So next item of business, report from officers and council liaisons, is a report by the Parks and Recreation Board, please.
Thank you. The things that I was actually going to report on, first of all, were a couple of things that they asked me to, to tell the council that are encouraged. One of the things that, that we talked about specifically was the cost of bathrooms. And that is, the two that they, that they talked about were, one, it's a permanent ADA bathroom that was cost about.
That's not on this agenda. You're looking at the POZAC grant reports?
Right, but the report from Parks and Rec is that's what they asked me to report on.
Okay, so that's not on this agenda, so that has to wait until it's on the agenda, an agenda. This, this is a report on the POZAC.
I know, I, I think I'm doing everybody a disservice by not talking about the thing that they specifically wanted me to talk about.
But if I may interject, I, just to give them about process, they made a recommendation, so it has to show up as an action item.
It's not really an action item, it's just a report.
They made a recommendation, so it has to show up as an actual item.
There is a, there, there's an, it's in item number five, it's talking about scope of work and plan changes for park improvement plans.
That's about enough stuff.
Because that's, yeah, that's not the bathroom.
The bathroom.
So we can't talk about the bathroom.
Not on the agenda. The report on the agenda is about the POZAC grant.
Okay, I can talk about POZAC grant. It started approximately two years ago, two and a half years ago, with a budget item for $67,000 for the city council to approve, which they did, with the hope that they would get the $200,000 grant as well, which they ended up getting. So we had $267,000 to, to go forward with. They began and, and they did a presentation in June of 2023, and we put together a very extensive plan that was completed, actually, it's not completed yet, but it's very close to being completed now. Park itself is almost done. And with just a few items, that same thing for the triangle. Augusta Park is the only one that has more things to do, and there's a, a to-do list, to-do list that we're, we're going through right now. So some of the things that are already done are the bocce ball, actually, the bocce ball court is not completely completed yet, but the, the cornhole is done, and ping pong tables are done, they're working on the rain garden even now. We have some, some volunteers that are very kind in putting together some plans for us that they've been working on, including Stonewall, and they're working on, right now, there's a, a large amount of mulch that's going to be spread in the rain garden. And we're, we're coming up with several other pieces that are going to be going forward. So one of them is, let's see where. Glass, okay. When we did talk about this in our last meeting, some signs, a biodiversity sign, a magnifier, which is a playground piece, a xylophone, and some triangle sunshade. Most of what we're doing is, doesn't cost anything, that total cost is $231 that, that they would like to go forward with spending to buy those pieces. Just about everything else so far is, doesn't have a cost to it, it's being done by volunteers. That includes the Boy Scouts, the Eagle Project, to do the rainwater. And that basically being donated, and the work is done by a Boy Scout who's earning an Eagle Scout medal. So there's, that's pretty much all of it. It's, it's coming along, and some of it is going forward. It's time, there are time constraints because of things like the, the planting time, the things can occur, they can't happen in the middle of summer, it happens a little later. But when it's done, hopefully, our master gardener that is involved, and we may have more than one master gardener, it'll be a true community garden and place where people can meet and enjoy, that's, that's the park.
Do you know where we are in the spending for the POZAC to date? That's part of this report in regards to, so this, that packet is related to a different item, but do we have a total on funds spent for POZAC of the POZAC? Uh huh. You know, page. Keep going. Is this a packet only Mr. Hamrick has? Yeah. That you prepared?
No.
Yeah.
She helped me with the documentation, I put it together to remember exactly where everything is, because practically, so far, $225,000, $236,000 leaves us with approximately $35,000.
So $225,000 has been expended. Do we have any more expected expenditures from the initial approved plan?
Uh, yeah, we still have some, some park pieces that we haven't really talked about. We have $331,000, and there's some other pieces as well. We still have the, not just with Augusta, but with others, we have the drinking fountain that needs to be done, the ramp that needs to be done at Augusta Park. Triangle. Yeah, the triangle, I'm sorry. And then we also have some more benches, more park benches that are in process of being bought for both Augusta and for, or rather, for, for Triangle and
Creechside?
Creechside, yes. So that way, and, and one of the things that I, that I've noticed, and I'm sure you have as well, I keep hearing, as far as a rave is concerned, how much used Creechside is. So we were worried about that, and we are no longer, it's, it's a hit, that's all there is to it.
There, there looks to be like we probably will end up with funds left over in POZAC.
Um, we may have some funds left over, and, and hopefully we'll, we'll expand it.
Well, I'm just saying, they haven't bought, so this was a report looking at where we are in current expenditures, any pending work left over, and then any anticipated expenditures to date to ensure that we're still working under that budget, and then also, you know, just get an idea of like what money is going to be left over to direct towards any other projects should they arrive.
You would have the. Right, exactly.
We may make a copy of that for the rest of town.
Um, yeah, one of the things that I'm, I'm anxious, I know that Councilmember Bailey has been working very closely with, with our finance and the fund view accounting system that's sporadic, because, because it was, it was left, not completed, when the city manager left. So there, there are, there are fund balances that weren't transferred in that we're working on transferring in. So for instance, if you go into the financial records and, and go to the, to the fund or the POZAC grant, it says that we still have $227,000.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, we're pretty close to being able to get the old information in so that we know what that, what the actual number is. But you're, it's probably in the 35 to 40 range, that's kind of what we're. Any other, anything else? I don't, I have, any, any, okay, great.
The general question here? Before we set up liaison with the reports, don't change the process, as I understand it, once a month, you would have liaison reports. And that, but do I need to issue a request at the end of this meeting? And can I have a liaison report for the item committee next time, or does it have to?
Yeah, you, no, you can, you can put it on, as far as I'm concerned, you can put it on any agenda. I mean, if you've got something that's pertinent and it needs to go to June 26th, I'd do that absolutely, submit it. We're not going to automatically, we, we used to do that, we used to have a report, and then we'd list them all, and it's like, no report, no report. So we just said, you got a report, let us know, and we'll get on these, so same thing applies. Okay, so we sort of said we'll do, you know, one set of reports at the first meeting, one set of reports at the second. But, you know, if you submit it, we'll respect it. And thanks for your support. Um, we do have a, a quick report, I think, quick, from city staff on the expenditures for the limb pickup after our hailstorm. And there's a, there was a report that was submitted, if you want to read to that, Ms. Bremer.
For the limb pickup, we have four, four different trips from the Howe Foundation, and each one was 3,600 per trip. The grand total was 14,300.
What was the entrance? So that was, that was hitting every, I mean, we, we told people after the hailstorm to bring their limbs up front and to, and that, you know, we'd pick them up. And so city manager rule negotiated with Howe Foundation, which is a group we've worked for, it's actually a nonprofit that does this work, so it's kind of nice that they do work. But they came up with a, so a daily rate, and it just took, it took four days to make it, and we still actually need another, another, sorry, there's still a couple of places that, that were missed or they're, they're caught. So we, we've located those. I myself drove every street in town and marked locations with my lovely wife that still needed to be picked up, and, and staff has the, will make those arrangements. It's just that, it's a large enough expenditure, we, we definitely only councilor can know what was going on. We also have a need, you know, really as soon as possible, the, at the entrance on the south side, on the, the park, on the south side, across from Memorial Plaza, Memorial Park. If you look in there, it's a, there are trees and one everywhere, we're going to get that cleaned up, and, and probably have the same thing, it'll, it's a day's work, for sure, so whether they can do it for another 36, but potentially another 7,200 or so that we're going to need to spend to find out after the next one. Ms. Bremer?
Where in the budget is this expenditure coming from?
Where did, where is it being posted?
I don't, I don't have answers for that. And then a follow-up question would be actually to the city attorney. If we, state law says that the council can spend the budget, but it must be strict compliance with the adopted budget. If council hasn't pre-anticipated this possible expense, it would go into a budget of minimal, correct?
Yes, sir. It can be that, depending on your council practice, it can be at the time, or it can be at the end of year when you're doing your projected budget.
Yeah. No, we didn't budget in advance for the hailstorm.
No.
But I did, I did do a, they already said no more major storms are allowed, so that's safe for now. Any other questions on, on the left again?
Mr. Mayor, if I could though, point of word regarding item number 25, there are several people here who would like to hear and hear the, the process that we would be going through in item number 25. And right now, here, I'm, I'm guessing that it will be around 9 o'clock or 9:30 before we ever get to that. And just out of consideration for those people who might want to hear that, I move that we move item 25 up, place it at item number five.
Yeah, we put it, we put it, we put it at the end of the agenda because this, you know, human resources personnel matters, and, and. Um, and, and, you know, sensitive information. I mean, it's, it's the city secretary's option to have that meeting, um, in closed or open session, you know, and as far as information, oh, here she is. Yeah, so, you know, if, if she would prefer to have it in open session and, and to do it now, I mean, I would look to the council to make that recommendation. But if you want to do a closed session, they all have a plea made. So, but it, it is her choice whether to have, you know, any of those kind of things in the number.
Ms. Secretary, do you have, um, an opinion on what we should do with this item number twenty-five?
Well, it's currently listed on the agenda in the second item. And I would have every right, um, under local government codes to request it until the open session.
Yes.
So.
And we can all for exact in the session, what we were told. And I think that at this point in time is not appropriate. Um, and we do have other citizens waiting for other items as well. Yep.
Didn't we have a motion in second to this?
Yeah.
But you can't take up the item out of order, is what I think. So the motion in second would be to move it up? Should we vote to move it up?
He moved to move it out of order.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you know, we can, we can take up the item whenever. Um, and, you know, and it is a, it is a discussion with council between council and staff. Um, and that's, that's what it is. You know, so if, and really I would leave it to the city secretary. And if he says, no, you know, really I would like to do it now and I would like to be in an open session, then, then I would, I would take it out of work.
So, Ms. City Secretary, you have a particular, uh, do you want to do this now or later, Suzanne?
Um, if there are people waiting to speak.
They've already spoken.
That's fine.
Yeah, if we go into, well, then we do have some, we do have some requests to speak that have not been read into the, into the thing. So, but, um, so if we take, if we take it now, you know, we can still go into closed session after reading the public comments. Or we can go into, into open, stay in open session and have a conversation.
Remembered also.
But I've already, also stated that if you choose to go into executive session, I do object.
It's not our call, it's yours.
We just offer it.
It's, it's your, it's your choice, not ours.
Well, clarification.
Um, we can actually do vote, correct?
Now, not if I object.
For O seven-four, the question for her is, does she want an open session or she okay with it?
But we have also, in addition.
Of O seven-one, that was going to be consultation with attorney.
Yes.
Yes. So if I were to press a consultation on this topic, I can have an executive session.
You could, if, it would be necessary, not necessarily necessary for attorney to give people advice, like, not legal advice, but if you're just saying cover back at us, then.
Then I can turn you back to the session. And it's. No, I can't, I couldn't tell you now, here now, if you had, if you felt like you had consultation with attorney and council asked, you go in closed session. If at that point in time, the, the questions did not seem to be for legal questions other than discussion of code provisions, then we would come back out. Then if there are legal questions, we would have those conversations.
So to clarify, by my understanding, you're wishing the entire discussion for you of number twenty-five here. Um, before we do that, I do have some legal questions that I could, you can put on an executive session. Okay, I'm, I'm not clear where we.
This. The third time I'm objecting to y'all going into executive.
Do you have the right to get legal counsel in executive session? That has nothing to do with your personal discussion.
Session about me.
Correct. This is a question regarding.
Yeah, and, and, you know.
I hope that with my objection that that is upheld in executive session.
First, we have to decide if we're moving them up or not.
Would you, if you're looking to use Suzanne?
I've already stated this by.
No.
Okay.
All right, here we go.
All right, so, um, all right.
So before those are read, can I read mine, please?
No, we have not opened the item yet.
Let you open it then, yeah.
All right. I move that we open discussion and possible action on the evaluation of city secretaries. That's to move it up in the agenda? No.
Okay.
We've bypassed that vote out of mill into contest for moving it up. So now we have to open number twenty-five. So it's now been seconded?
My question holds first precedence, which is I ask for executive session in the board. We say that twenty-five? Because I have some legal questions that apply to.
We can, we can open twenty-five and then if the request is made and they do support, either motion required for consultation with attorney.
Well, we would, we would need a motion to go into, to close session, so.
That, we, we'll do that after we.
So we can have them to standing or something?
So we open, open the item.
So I guess I.
We open number twenty-five and then if we said to go.
By the act of speaking, I've given it a second.
Okay.
So who's the motionator? Ann Shearer?
Me?
Second in line. Or, or present. Second by Brummer to move the item, um, that's to the next item on the agenda. Um, by show of hands, can vote to do this? Raise your hand, say, I'd be like to move, if you agree to move it up.
Correct.
So, all right. Mayes?
May.
Round motion fails. All right, for the next item on the agenda, then we'll get the approval of special council meeting minutes.
Thank you. I move to adopt the May twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes with the edit to item two in the minutes to include motion was seconded by council member Hamburg. Did you hear?
Yeah, I got it. I got a second. All right, so, um, so we're directing staff to edit the minutes from twenty-nine on number two. The, the, the motion was seconded by council member Hamburg. Seconded by Krista Richardson. Um, any discussion? All right. By show of hands, and I, please, state your preference. And Mayes? Motion passes unanimously and we'll move on to item number five, which is the discussion and possible action. Um, the group's goal of work and plan changes for the park improvements. Um, your item, uh, present lines.
I move that council approve the scope of work changes for Augusta Park as presented in this packet.
A second.
Um, you might be wondering why we need those items. Um, the Parks Board presented a plan, which is in front of you. It's that beautiful green page. The green page is there. If you want to find that packet, that was on everybody's desk. And that was in June of twenty-twenty-three. And the motion was that parks was authorized to move forward with that plan. Later on, a Boy Scout project for a rainwater collection system based on the concept of providing wildlife habitat was brought to council and approved for Augusta Park. Unfortunately, the plans you see in front of you today, the Augusta Park rain garden, were never brought to council. So the Parks Board represented these plans by volunteers. The Parks Board thought it was a great idea. They made sure they had enough money in their budget to cover any incidental costs there might be on this project. Unfortunately, their work was never carried forward to a council agenda on their behalf. They continued to operate under the assumption that they had council approval for a scope of work change and new park improvements. And council never saw it. In addition, this packet was never posted in an open meeting, which is not appropriate. It should have been posted for them. So this is a little bit of cleanup. We are hoping at this time that council will approve the scope of work change because some of the work has already been done. Specifically, the rock wall. I was assured that an arborist was consulted and that the rock wall was adjusted to compensate for the tree roots there, the critical root zone. I don't have that to put in front of you all, um, but I feel pretty good about that assessment and that statement. One of the volunteers involved in that project is here this evening. If you would like her to speak on behalf of the project at all, if you have any questions about it or concerns. There, this is not going to increase expenditures on the park, but it is a pretty significant change in the design and what will appear there differing from what council previously approved. So I am humbly asking you to support these volunteers and honor their work at this time, even if maybe we got the cart before the horse on this one.
I applaud the volunteers for their work. Um, we'll be down there helping. Yeah, so it's good, good to see it done. And, and this is just tidying up some loose ends. Um, any discussion on the, on the motion? Not, um, I said it's not. You do as I speak, sir. Councilmember Brummer?
First, I'd like to thank Mayor Proton Hines for filling the void of the Parks Liaison by placing this item on the agenda. For those that do not know me well, I value the process of how things are done as much as I value what is being done. I'm going to impart, speak to this breakdown of communication regarding parking rules. And the failure on the part of those council has entrusted to keep council informed about council-approved projects. Council had entrusted those duties to staff, the previous city manager, and the Parks Liaison. On the outset, I want to be clear, I am not suggesting that the great volunteers of the Parks Board are to blame for this breakdown of communication. Because again, council placed the duties of this communication into the hands of the Parks Liaison and the city manager. They were to make sure that what improvements were being made followed what council approved. State law does not allow anyone to change council action. Only council can change a council action. Not the Parks Liaison, not the city manager, not any one person of the governing body. If there were changes to the plan that council approved, those changes thus come back to council to consider and take action on. And council can only take action after meeting the requirements of TONO. The reason behind this state-required process is to protect the transparency for the citizens of this fair city. I have reviewed all council meetings from January twenty-twenty-three to today as it relates to park improvements of the city that include Augusta Park. Council approved the Parks Board recommendation as presented to them on June, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I've included the actual minutes for you to see. Um, and that was utilizing the POZAC funds that the city received. On December thirteenth, also I've included for you the minutes, council approved a Boy Scout project for Augusta Park utilizing unspent spectacular funds at a cost of one thousand forty-five dollars and twelve cents. Council, please review the handouts I have provided on those two council actions. You will notice that council member Hamburg's motion was specific in both instances. Today, these are the only plans that council has chosen to take action on for park improvements for Augusta Park. I've included a copy of the city policy regarding the duties of the ministry, the advisory body liaisons. I suggest council member Hamburg read it carefully. In the packet for this item on page fourteen, the new parks recommendation for Augusta Park improvements state that council had already approved these plans. It appears that the Parks Board was under the impression that the process of getting council approval for these changes were already completed. And I'm sorry to the Parks Board if anyone has communicated to them that this was the case. I am sorry that the previous manager allowed work to be done to implement this plan that was never come before council. I place this failure at the feet of the Parks Liaison and any staff allowed this to happen. Though some elements being presented to us today were previously approved by council, such as two thousand dollars for signage, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for seating, the gray wood, and a thousand forty-five dollars for the Boy Scout project. There are additional elements in this plan that were never presented to council for their consideration, such as the large boulders and river rock placed in the river rain garden and the stone work wall that was then installed with Augusta Park. There are also missing elements that council had previously approved, such as the Hacks Tunnel and the Asperter for the ball court. Now, council is being placed in a difficult position as they are being asked to approve Augusta Park improvements that have already been done, such as the large boulders and stone wall. Council has never been made aware of these changes nor the cost of these changes. Now, there is an expectation that council must approve these changes because what happens if they don't? Does it mean if council doesn't approve these changes that these changes must be removed? And at what cost would that be? Again, I resent that Parks Board liaison and staff failed to follow state laws and our local code, which has led to putting council in this position. The issue I see that should prevent us from approving these plans today are, there is an absence of a cost associated with the changes that were already made, such as the stone work wall and the large boulders placed in the rain garden. There's nothing in this plan that represents the cost of those things. There's also an issue that the stone work wall in the plans presented today, if we were to approve them, is different than the stone work wall that is actually already installed. I also see that a landscape architect was employed to create blueprints for Augusta Park, yet I see no blueprints being presented to us, nor has council ever been asked to approve this expense. This recommendation for parks is the first we are hearing about such an expense. Um, perhaps the landscape architect is offering their services for previous city. I'm not sure. It's not clear in this document. I also see that there's a Girl Scout project involved as well as others, yet those efforts are not clearly defined in the plans being presented today. Um, what are these additional partners having on doing in our public parks and what are the actual costs for the city? This is the first time that council is hearing about these other projects as well. So they should be detailed out so that council can consider them. The citizens of this city have elected the governing body to represent them and has entrusted them to uphold the law and be the stewards of the city. And that includes our lovely parents. One of the main elements I cherish about laws handed down to us from the state is to make sure that there's clear transparency provided to our citizens on how the city is spending its funds. I might add, the actions taken in our public parks and how we might be altered or improved, council and only council has been given the weight of that responsibility. And even then, I as an individual council member cannot take actions myself alone to make changes in our public parks. I get that that statement is shocking. It is intentionally so. So that it impresses upon us all how important this is. And we follow the guidelines of the process of government as it is handed down to us by the state. And to once again emphasize how much the Parks Liaison and staff has failed us in this situation. I, for this reason, I move to amend that council sends back to the Parks Board this recommendation to change council's original park improvements so that the Parks Board can include a clear detailed plans and cost of changes that were already made. And a clear plan that includes cost breakdowns for any future improvements that they would like to, council to consider. I will finish this up then. I would like to.
He still has fifty-four seconds.
Oh.
Do you want to finish up, Chris?
There's one person in this room managing our meetings. There's one person in this room managing our meetings. This person?
I used to do the time. I used to do the Robert's Rules of Order Timos. That's all I'm doing.
Matt?
I didn't get a second.
I'd just like to speak just a little bit. I was at that meeting where the plan was presented by the master naturalists. Mr. Hambert wasn't able to attend. We knew he wasn't going to be able to attend. I could have brought the plan. Someone could have brought the plan and we didn't. You know, it's a fall out. Everybody was really excited about it and said, hey, this is great. It needs to be shared with the power of the B and it was. So that's a failure on, I'll take some of the blame. It's a failure on my part and on the staff's part. You know, liaison could have followed up and said, hey, what happened? Anything I need to do? I mean, there were several places where we could have done a better job. The bottom line is, you're right. This is something that should have come to the council. Hey, we've got this great new idea. It changes the scope of what we're going to do in Augusta Park. We'd like you to take a look at it and give us your feedback and we're asking for this much money in order to get it done. That would have been probably. So, I'm not arguing with you. I think you're right. What you said is absolutely true, every word of it. But we have a nice proposal here that sort of covers the bases. It gives us sort of a fresh start. We can move forward from there. I have personally talked to liaison and chairs to impress on them the importance of providing detailed budgets so that they can be followed and become part of the overall budget until we're in that process and so we're asking chairs and liaisons and staff to do the work.
So, the main point I have is there's work that has been done that council has approved and we have no cost associated with this work. We have nothing in this plan and we, however, councilmember Hambert is saying, oh, it's only going to cost $300. But there's nothing here that's represented.
The cost of the wall?
The cost of the wall, the stonework, as well as the cost of these blueprints.
There were no costs of the blueprints.
I would move that we ask the Parks Department to create an itemized cost analysis of the scope of work change and submit an updated plan to us, not as contingency for approval. So I'm just adding a motion that we're asking the appropriate report to come back to us now.
All right, a motion by Mayor Tim Hines. I think it's by councilmember Hambert for the Parks Innovation Board to come back to council with an itemized list of what has been done and what is projected to be done, bring it back to the council for information.
In addition to the updated design.
And updated design. So, and that is an amendment. That's a separate motion that we can vote on this time.
Getting a little clarification. Okay, so this, what I wish you said, but I'm not sure, is that this could be supplemental at a different date, but that we can still rule on item five?
It's still on the floor.
There are two different motions. One is asking, we want these materials now. We need to see these costs. We need to see your plans now. What we got were the drafts. But we need to have an open meeting in a public record period. Those records need to be published somewhere.
Yeah, so what we want is, you know, we've got the list of what's done. We just need to submit that. So how much did we spend for the rock wall? Because otherwise, we don't really know what that bottom line is on both end. So we need to get all that and make sure that it's appropriately out of the way.
Good. That is the good thing.
We're there.
I knew who you were.
They have a name, Deborah. But those costs are in the sheet. I understand what you're saying, but the costs are included in the sheet.
We've been getting that.
There's the Whitman's best of far and then Ms. Gilbert's information also in there.
So actually, this was given to us here at the meeting and one council member had a copy of it. We all just got copies and it's like a different report. So the motion would still stand that there is basically an itemized description of specific to Augusta. What you all removed that will not be installed anymore, because that's still not clear, if that makes sense. And then what you plan to install and then those final plans showing that that wall has been adjusted because we do know that.
So maybe it's Augusta that you really need to update on.
If you have changed scope of work on any of the parks, that absolutely has to run through council before approved. And in fact, it applies to all green spaces, everything, you know. We have the ability to authorize volunteer groups to do work, for example, like the Wood Creek Weaters take care of the front of Wood Creek. But if they were to want to drastically change the landscape of the entrance, they would have to submit that plan to council, if that makes sense. So it was just kind of a failure in process. We just need to get it up back where it's at.
And I apologize too because there was a failure in our communication with the city manager. We thought he communicated these things to y'all. Because everything was approved through him, bids, everything. So, but we'll update Augusta for you.
And anything that, you know, I'm happy to help wherever I can as well and I'm sure that obviously it's on.
But it's all within our budget.
Right.
We have not overspent.
The budget is fine. And what I'm hoping what we can do as part of this process is say, okay, this is, everything's been spent for today. Everything is accounted for. We have $225, you know, to the bottom line, which means, you know, what are your plans? You know, for the rest of that, because we've got to spend that money. We're not going to give it back to the county. So we need to, we need to know and maybe that it becomes part of a workshop that we can, and maybe council has some ideas to share, but you know, come to, go to the Parks meetings. They're great. They're fun.
We're not allowed. Look over there. We can't go.
Well, you can't all go at the same time. You can't all go at the same time. Or they could ask for a workshop and post it, you know, for a parks slash council workshop, if you wanted to do that. I would say you were crazy, but you know, you could do that. But anyway. So anyway, let's vote on Mayor Tim Hines's motion on just updating the itemized plan thing back to council.
Vote.
We're voting.
Aye.
Yeah, you can say aye. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, no opposed. All right, thank you very much. We'll go back to the actual original number five, which is to accept the scope of work as presented in item number five, is submitted by council, Mayor Fortem Hines, and signed by councilmember Hambert. So any further steps on that? Approximately, signified by raising your hand saying aye.
Aye.
All right, no names. All right. Next on the agenda is a resolution of the City of Wood Creek supporting a One Water strategy. Would you like to take that to the floor, Mayor Tim?
I move that we approve a resolution of the City of Wood Creek supporting innovative One Water strategies and exploring such strategies in public and private development projects within the city.
I think it.
Okay, I heard councilmember.
Yeah, so this is the resolution that mirrors one that Wenderly has already passed. And as a valley, we are really attempting to stay strong in our approach to our water conservation measures. Resolutions simply guide council staff decisions, so by passing this resolution, we're committing to taking these factors into account whenever we're making decisions for the city. Specifically, this is focusing around what more we can do for water conservation measures. This was reviewed by the Water Task Force. They did not have a lot of amendments to add to it. They just simply asked that we tailor it more toward Wood Creek, which those edits were made. So the Water Task Force did greenlight this and so it came to council after that review. And I'm having to answer any questions, but frankly, it gets pretty cut and dry, you know, like it's I answered the whole question, but.
This has been the forecaster before and Brad, back then, was pretty sure to kind of forecast, approximately 2019. And I've looked at this pretty closely and I'm beginning to understand One Water. It's one of those things that we didn't really know about until Blue Hole School went and did a One Water project for that school. And it's great that they did. It works really well for them because they are pretty much a microcosm in terms of the way a One Water system would work. It all happens and stays within Blue Hole School. It worked great. We, however, are an entity that has more than 800 houses and at least two or three different ways of doing sewer, which is a part of One Water. A lot of people don't know what purple pipe is. And if they know what purple pipe is, they know that we use recycled water, just like the golf course does, to be able to water and irrigate whatever it is that we have, whether it's grass or shrubs or whatever. But we also have two different types of sewer. We have our grinder pump and sewer main way, and we also have a septic tank. We're never going to be able, until we get rid of all the septic tanks, which is going to be a long time from now. Both my neighbors have septic tanks. Their houses were built before 2000 and approximately soon thereafter, we went to grinder pumps and sewer system. So that's not going to be something that we can do anytime soon. The only part that we can do is something that involves water conservation. And I don't know if we necessarily need a resolution to go forward with water conservation. I think that we're doing it as well as we can right now, but the best thing that we can do is still encourage people to do that. Have their own rainwater collection systems. That is one of the best things that we have. And we're not gray waters as well, which is much more difficult because you have to change the plumbing in your house when you do it. So I don't know that doing the One Water to the full effect that this has would be would be the way to go. We definitely, I can see supporting it. But I don't know how far, and I don't want to be a glass half empty kind of person saying, but what we can do is just the supply side, not the sewer side of One Water at this point. Versus where if you look at Blue Hole, they're doing the whole thing because they can.
Any other discussions? I'll provoke. In favor of adopting resolutions in favor of One Water strategies and exploring such strategies in public and private development projects within the city, please signify by raising your hand saying aye.
Your vote taken, so. Aye.
So your key record then?
Aye.
President, aye. Maze? So I didn't know you had left. We did take a vote on item number six. And I'll pass four ayes and one aye. But to the members. Item number seven is asking to temporarily grant full administrative access to the general ledger in all other areas of the Fund View accounting software through Mayor Rasko and authorize myself to grant limited access to other staff and council members.
I move that we temporarily grant full administrative access to the general ledger in all areas of Fund View accounting software to Mayor Rasko and authorize the mayor to grant limited access to other staff and council members.
I second. I'm giving it to councilmember Bailey.
To introduce this item, essentially, while we authorize the mayor to take on the administrative roles of the city administrator, because we typically do not allow council members to have added access in accounting, it was deemed appropriate for council to go ahead and acknowledge that was going to be happening. And most importantly, what we are hoping to happen tonight is that Mayor Rasko, as acting city administrator, can authorize councilmember Bailey to assist. Specifically, right now, the issue is in our general ledger, the Fund View accounting transition process was incomplete when Kevin Ruhl resigned. So we would like someone with professional accounting background to be able to assist in a more direct manner. Typically, a council member would only have viewing of reports. So we're asking that we're authorizing her to have a touch more authority. And same with other staff members. They wouldn't typically be operating in some of these systems, but while we are down as city administrator, it would be really helpful if we could authorize some staff members beyond what is typically part of their duties.
I'd like to comment a little bit. I've been looking a lot. There's quite a bit of work to be done, but it is my field and I can help out. We won't have to hire an accountant. Some of this, I'll have to work with Amy from Fund View. A lot of the rest of it. I don't know that I need editing ability because when I worked as an accountant, you can have just outside access. I need to be able to view and my suggestion was that I work with Fund View, work through the system, propose answers, work with her, and then bring the proposed changes back to council before, you know, anything has changed. So that we'll make it very clear to council what needs to be done and you'll be able to see the layout. But I really wouldn't need edit ability.
Except for in the budget, because somebody has to be authorized to go in and edit the budget portion, right? So you can plug in numbers and then if we say, hey, we want to add 10,000 more, we have to have somebody authorized to go in there and do that. And right now, technically, Mayor Rasko could do it all, right? He's asking to be able to authorize other people for assistance. Right now, you're at the top of that list.
There's also, sorry. There's also, look, there's very sophisticated levels of security and authorization. So like with the budget, for instance, you know, an individual can be okay to plug numbers in. But in order to take the budget from proposed to, like to the council, they wouldn't have it. They wouldn't be able to do that. That would take the mayor or the city manager moving it to the next level. And then when the city council approves it, assuming they do, approves the budget and it goes to, okay, this is the final budget, that is another level of security. So, you know, we wouldn't necessarily need, you know, a council member, you know, pushing those buttons. But to get the information in there is important. And I know you've been working, sort of looking over the shoulder and working with some Fund View people and doing a lot of work. I know you've spent hours on this already. But without being able to actually get into Fund View with your own account, with your own login and password.
Well, I do. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but it's a higher level.
And just explore and trace out what was done, how to reverse it, if we were very.
And it would be helpful time-wise, since we do have such a giant backlog, if some of these decisions could be made in a moment, especially if it's not consequential, right? If Amy's just like, is this the appropriate place for this? And you say yes, she should be able to do that in a moment. So this would allow to give authority for you to be able to work with her directly to kind of help sort out that coding. This isn't about spending money or being able to spend more money or writing checks, none of that. This is literally just the coding and accounting to help sort through the mess that was left for us.
And I will say, Amy gave me a compliment. She said, usually if a client wants to go and do the She said, usually if a client wants to go into this kind of adept, they will require training. But she said, I can tell you know what you're doing and I understand. So you don't need the training.
But we can still talk about training if you need it.
Yes, okay.
Okay, but no further discussion, I'll sort this out.
My own concern, I do have a concern, and that is that that I think that Ms. Bailey is honest and had all the integrity that she, that we would require of her in order to do this. But she is, there is no other overview other than Amy. So I don't know, I don't think there is. We don't have CPA. We have said that we don't need one anymore with Fund View in the place, but it's not completely there yet. It's getting there. So I don't know, maybe if a CPA were to be a reasonable thing to have for the citizens to know absolutely that we're doing things on the other end. So I think a most.
Caliber.
I actually think that that might just complicate things in what we're doing right now. It is not that complex, but it's just going to be time consuming. If we introduce another accounting system, even our CPA have some issues with some of the work that they've done. Maybe ongoing, an ongoing process. We have a quarterly review by an outside account. But what I'm also, that's why I think it's important that I have no editing ability.
I just want to remind everyone, for a check to be signed, I have to look at it, he has to look at it. So there's two checks, right? For us to decide to spend money, it has to be tied to the budget, right? So there can't be that. And also, these are two separate arms of the system, right? One of them is just, we're needing help with the transition from one accounting software to the other and where things are getting lined up in those two systems, right? The other one is the implementing of an expenditure. That's this other arm. That is not necessarily the purpose of this item. And to be clear, as city administrator, he already has a lot of those authorities at this point in time, right? And then we are the checks. This entire body is responsible for making sure money is spent appropriately and accounted for, and we have to still review everything. You know what I mean? So this is not the wild, wild west where Councilmember Bailey's going to get in there and start adding zeros and giving herself a paycheck. None of that's possible. This is literally just authorizing that Fund View accountant person to openly talk with her and then take the recommendation presented rather than creating a list of possible changes to then come back and be approved later. You know what I mean? So I just.
Amy is a CPA.
Yeah, she is a CPA. We had a CPA attain who prepared all of those accounts. So right now, we have three CPAs on the project, technically, you included, so.
My question then would be, with Amy, would she be in our corner? I kind of agree with Lanaya that having that little extra layer, even though it looks like it's a pain to have that extra layer, would be something that would be, make our citizens much more comfortable knowing that we are totally accountable for everything that we're doing.
Yes, this is a backlog of money already spent. Yeah, and having to get those reports prepared for council, which we then also have to review and approve.
Any other discussion? All right, so all in favor of temporarily granting full administrative access to the general ledger in other areas of Fund View accounting software, myself and authorization to grant limited access to others, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All those, right? President passes, four yeas, one nay. I'm taking the.
I move that we hire Jim Burton as a full-time employee of the city of Wood Creek for the position of co-administrator and planner.
Please second. If I may bring to your attention.
You have public comments, I believe.
On number eight?
Yeah.
Well, I already read Ms. Sheds. Ms. Kayler is for 25, and this is for 25. I'll read the section from Robin Dow for eight, nine, 10, and then she also has commented for 25. I'd like this to be read before item number eight, but regarding items eight, nine, 10. Off of the lower item 25 comment. I thought I'd known Jim being construction company owner. I wasn't sure, and I'm a nerd, so I Googled him. I found his LinkedIn page lists him as both a company owner and director of developmental services for the city of Wood Creek. I am concerned about how we consider bringing him in as a full-time employee with another agenda item, increasing the role and pay as well as adding him as a check signer. Doesn't running an already busy construction company constitute a conflict of interest? How will he fulfill a full-time role at City Hall while also managing day-to-day activities at his company? What are his intentions with this construction company?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor? Do you own a construction company?
Yes.
You do?
I didn't know that. Yeah. I'll tell you the volume of work that we do. I did one last year, where I finished it in January, and then I did one in '23. And I currently have eight piece property in Wood Creek door, which I will, at some point, proceed on developments. That's the extent of my volume and time it takes away.
Can I speak to this item?
Please.
So right now, Mr. Burton is actually already working this position, and he's not receiving any of the benefits. Meaning, council hired a part-time co-administrator. It quickly turned into a much larger job. Mr. Rule, pretty city manager Rule, came to council and asked, hey, we'd like him to take on planning responsibilities and grade this role. We'd like to increase the hours approved for this position. Council said yes, right? Flash forward a few more months, and Mr. Burton is actually working basically a full-time job there already. He is filling in on a variety of roles that are under co-administration and planning, including meeting with engineers, meeting with private developers, meeting with, like, your phone was blowing up the other day with the ATS people that do all our inspections. So it is pretty clear that there is a workload that would support a full-time position. But most importantly, unless you recognize this full-time position, you don't get our insurance stipend. So it's hard to work a full-time position at this job and have another full-time position where you're going to get insurance, right? So this was a way of making sure that Mr. Burton not only has insurance, but he paid time leave, vacation. Those kind of built-in perks that help with employee retention, value, ensure you don't have burnout, all of that stuff. So it's mostly just a respect of, like, the role he's already serving and making sure that he is on the same status as other employees. I don't want this to be confused with other items on this agenda, though. And those are completely separate, and voting on this item has nothing to do with nine or 10.
Mr. Burton works more hours than, at least as many, if not more hours than anybody here, for which he is compensated on hourly basis. Every other employee, every other person that works for the city, right down to the person who does odd jobs, is a full employee of the city. Whether they're hourly or salary, they're still an employee of the city. So, you know, to ask Mr. Burton to work full-time without the benefits of full-time employment is not, not the city I want to represent. You know, it's like, we need to be fair. And this was, this is something that I approached Mr. Burton on and said, do you want to stay as a contract employee? Or would you like to, or contractor? Or do you want to be an employee? And he said, well, it would be, it would be good. And one of the reasons is that, is that, you know, the building industry is, you know, fuck it. If he ever decides that he wants to go off and build 27 houses, you know, that's on him. He can live to do that, but he's not going to have time because we're not going to give him the time to do it.
I will just, to the background, but that's a relevant one. That's why I'm tired. Okay, now I have to be the meeting here. Okay, one of my concerns, and I'm learning some of it, is we have no resume, no job description, and we're creating a position.
The position is already, we're taking the position he has.
But I've never seen, what I remember is for $8,000, we're going to have a co-administrator for an annual job, and he took that position. Right now, the cost today is $17,000. But I still have not seen, this is pressing my concerns. I haven't seen a job description, and what is this job description?
You approved it.
Yeah.
The council, and it was approved by the council.
I'm trying to find the meeting right now.
City manager Rule brought the job, the position description to council, which we approved. And, I mean, it's online, it's readily available.
Then that would have been very helpful.
It should have been in fact, it would have been good in fact.
In fact, because all of the same, and that's why I ask if we needed to have executive session. Because we need to offer this job, do we need to post it? And I read online, we can, we don't have, but often it's rejected. But then I wanted to bring up something else. Okay, I just survey, just review the last 10 years. The last 10 years, property tax has doubled. In the last, since 2015, we have included, we have increased population of the city 26%. We have increased staffing costs 230% if we add this. We just need to be aware of what we're doing. We used to pay $8,000 a year. Now I estimate this position, which is roughly looked at 2,000 a month, we project that forward at 3,000, and payroll cost is about 33,000. That was still pretty, it's 295,000 annually for staffing. I just want us to be aware of what we're doing and having that many people as a staff for our small town.
So, couple things I'd like to speak to. First, Mr. Burton's background in construction is exactly why, when he applied to the position, he won out over the other applicants. Because he does have a direct background in this field and knows it backwards and forth. So I think that that is a mark in his favor. What we aren't changing tonight is the money paid to him. In fact, he's going to be working the same amount of hours he's already working that we're already paying for. We're just going to be recognizing him as a full employee, hopefully, so that he can earn those other benefits, like paid vacation. He contributes into the retirement fund and things like that then, and the insurance stipend. So this is actually not presenting a cost change at this point in time because we're not pushing him to salary. We're not changing how much he's paid. We're literally just going to recognize him as a full-time employee, hopefully. And we did run this by the lawyer. So Mr. Zach, who's not here today, did, we told him what this item was about. He wrote the wording for the item. He edited what we submitted. So just so we know, we are following legal process in regards to this position change. Should we move forward with it? I got to be honest, Ms. Bailey. I completely agree with you on the excess expenditures in staff as a concerning point, given that our city hasn't grown a whole lot. And, you know, the thing is, is we already approved the growth of staff. We're already here. These people are serving crucial roles for us. Our previous city administrator deemed it necessary to have this role and position, given the amount of subdivision and things, especially going on in our ETJ. So I just, you know, if you look at the doubling of taxes over 10 years, you can talk about a lot of reasons that drive that. What we have done in the last three years is keep our tax rates steady. We actually haven't been doubling the taxes. We've been keeping the budget steady. We have kept the tax rate steady. We only had a 2 cent increase to cover that giant bond. So we've actually been able to increase staff in the last three years, keep a tight budget, keep taxes under control.
Well, the reason the tax go up is we have more homes paying taxes.
Oh, we have taxed homes. And I know the rates haven't changed, but I've got some little suspicious argument in that property values have gone up.
Yeah.
So your property taxes have doubled. That is, there's no doubt about it. Costs are up, and in the long run, I really, I would rather pay staff and let them have an income than pay, you know, our engineers or the truders, whoever who charge actually very large fees, but will accept you tonight. But, um, yes, I see that. I just wanted to point out, we need to be cognizant of the facts that we have. We have grown in our staffing expenses, and that we should be cautious. And the other thing, though, what is that dollar? Here's what I came up with. Right now, we're at $17,000. That works out to about 2,000 a month. Running that forward, that makes, well, I think it was 27,000. And then I thought you said you were going to come up and pay a little bit. That'd be 30,000 at a 25% or payroll tax, it'd be 33,000. Is that correct?
No, incorrect.
Okay.
Yeah, he has been working at an hourly rate. If we ask him to do this and go, see, if I could, he said no changes. I would put him on salary, and I would put him on a salary that is fair.
But we don't have it, right?
Right, well, we haven't, we haven't come back to council with, what we're saying is, making him an employee is like flipping a switch in Fund View that says, okay, we're going to pay him now as an employee. We're going to take taxes down. We're going to, you know, do everything that you do as an employee. Then we come back with, you know, a plan, a program plan. But, you know, if we just get him to be an employee, it's not, it's not a change in the position. It's a change in the employments. So rather than be a contractor, he's going to work as an employee for the city of Wood Creek. Then, then, you know, when it comes time to set salaries, I mean, we'll do that. But, yeah, I mean, he will be asked to take on more responsibility. He already has. He's already doing a lot more than he was with, as he was hired to do. And that was, that was, you know, manager rule. Making decisions that were ultimately approved of.
And just still being, that's the pattern in me. It's like, yeah, but if he makes that much now and it's not going to change, we don't. Why did you say my number was wrong?
Because his, you know, I haven't, I haven't done the, you know, the full, I'm not sure where you got your numbers.
I didn't stare at this number. $7,000 today. We had an 8,000 a month budget. We are now at $17,000. I figured that was in eight months.
Okay, so he's been working hourly.
Okay.
About, pretty close to 40 hours a week lately. You know, if not more on an hourly basis. And his rate of pay is, I mean, the range is like 20 to 30 an hour. You know, so I just don't know how you can get $17,000 in 40 hours a week.
Just the cost of day under his category.
So the projection is, you know, to make it a position not for Mr. Burton, but for anybody that we ever want to bring in and hire as a qualified co-administrative planner and provide them a living wage, you know, then that's what we're doing. That's what we're talking about this. I had Mr. Burton first.
I actually have a question for you, city attorney. My question is, does this item require more than just a minute order? I see no resolution, I see no.
So it's not a direct report to the council. It's just a switch in an employee position from.
It's an administrative.
So a minute orders?
It's truly an administrative, I mean.
Because that will come back, I'm sorry, that will come back in the budget. It was never funded in the budget.
So, can I address that? So, can I talk about the budget evaluation for entering budget season, right? Mayor Rasko's memory of salary talks is not incorrect. Why I didn't bring that up is because that will be part of the budget discussion. So it might be pertinent to look at all of our positions and the salary they make and how much they're working and address that. So it might be cost-saving. So it might be cost-saving for us to move, uh, co-administrator, planner one to a salary position as well. The reason we're not doing that right now is because that would take a budget amendment. That would be different because we would be changing things significantly in the structure of our pay and how we allocate budget funds. Does that make sense? Right now, he's already working these hours. It's, like I said, it's those other features. And because we have lost our city manager, we are not paying that salary out. So there is a, like I said, a gap there that allows us to take a breath here, you know? So, your, your points, Councilmember Bailey, are valid. And that is a great topic for budget season, moving in to discuss the salaries of all employees. Whether or not certain employees should be salaried or is it better if they are hourly? Um, but the other thing about hourly, everybody, hourly, everybody needs to remember is if you hit forty, time and a half, right? So, um, yeah.
So, uh, we are talking about eight as it stands, as kind of an island, that he would become a full-time employee. That's just a yes, no type thing that we're gonna say. Um, and I, the question, I had a question that I asked mine, that's already answered. Which was how, how much does he work already as a, um, as a co-administrator slash city planner? And the answer I got was basically nearly forty hours, if not forty hours. So, the, the other part was, and, and this is the next item, it seems like these things were put in order, this particular order, so that we could say yes, yes, and yes. But, the, the possibility of, of, of yes, um, yes, no, yes, or yes, no, no. Um, uh, they're gonna be considered, I think, and they should be considered. Uh, the, since the, the question was already answered, that he's already pretty much working full-time and there may be some savings, is good. That, that makes perfect sense. And I'm just wondering, then how is he gonna assist, uh, Mr. Rasko as far as doing what he needs? If he's almost already working full-time, doing what he's doing? Um, I'll leave the, the last part. So, I just wonder how much he's gonna be able to help in doing the additional jobs. Uh, because he's already.
We can talk about that when we reset the agenda.
Yeah, it's, I, just the idea of stacking the agenda items is quite concerning to me.
Um, I'm sending you all the RFQ that was posted for the co-administrator originally. I am still trying to track down that one that came to council before, when we also designated planner one responsibilities. This is a do not reply email. This is posted on the, uh, internet website for the, everyone. You all can search for this and find the original, uh, application RFQ for the non-full-time staff position. Like I said, I'm still trying to track down the other document that got before us.
It is, would have been a good place for, but wait.
I, you're right, it would have, it would have been, it's just that it was, it was not that long, I just thought, you know, it was, I'm everybody, mine.
Well, not that.
Yeah, right, some, well, yeah, some of it, though we have the memories of these two, I don't know, so. Um, so anyway, so if there's any other discussion on this. All right, on item number eight, uh, hiring Jim Burton as a full-time employee of the city of Woodbury for the position of co-administerative planner. In favor, signify by raising hands in the air.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now we'll move into.
I'd like to point a personal preference, or can I take a break?
No.
Take a break.
Yeah, we'll take a break. Exactly, eight fifteen, please.
Yeah. Then, do you remember why not me and one, that we changed us? We're planner one as well.
January twenty-fourth, can I?
Eight fifteen.
For everybody going on the line, I've seen you coming out.
Well, my husband's got a direct email right now, I, I can't even look at you, and I'm not. You look like you're doing chemo medication.
So, I.
And I'm glad to see you out.
I always love this, I always love this.
Oh, I know she did. Do you have?
I did.
Well, I'm still working in, I'm on deck.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good to hear.
Bye, sweetie.
What color are you? She does. Oh, yeah. When you're, yeah, when you're bare. Most of the people get sick, they go real close, they go. It's my biggest thing right now is to get ree.
I'm sorry.
Item number nine, which is to authorize Jim Burton to assist Mayor Rasko in the administrative duties of the city administrator of City Wood Creek and provide for a temporary.
I move that we authorize Jim Burton to assist the mayor in his duties as acting city administrator and increase pay while performing these responsibilities of the amount of $1,000 per month for the retroactive starting date of June 2nd.
One second?
Yeah. Oh, you said second, not second.
Seconded, I second the motion.
Yeah, by asking that question.
I heard that too. I heard it as a question mark, just the second? Okay, great, thanks. I should have been looking at us. All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Burden, I second it, but on November Richardson, to assist, have Jim Burton assist the mayor in administrative duties of the city administrator of Wood Creek and provide a temporary change of salary, $1,000 per month, retroactive to being cited.
I'd like to end this item. As Mayor Rasko and I were talking about, Mr. Burton has stepped in to assist at times in roles in the city that were not part of his job description originally. This assistance was given, starting at the time that Mayor Rasko took over the administrative role of the city manager. So that's what the retroactive data is essentially, it's to compensate. But it's a monthly salary, so we adjusted it for like the payroll situation as well. So that's why there's that retroactive date. The reason for this request is because Mr. Burton is a paid staff member and he's already at City Hall. It would alleviate a lot of the burden on a non-paid volunteer to have somebody here authorized to act on his behalf more frequently. So, you know, we have vendors calling, needing authorization for something. Mr. Burton could have already discussed it with the mayor. He can now handle that versus Mayor Rasko literally having to camp out here every single day all day long to handle any possible city administrator things that may arise. So it's not to say Mr. Burton will be usurping his role or taking over city administrator. He's not being hired for that position. He's literally just being asked to support him there while we work on hiring a permanent position person.
Thank you. I made a little kind of a council because I wanted to kind of point to two things that we have not been having been done previously. And I just wanted to put it on everyone's radar, including Jim. I'll hand you one of these in a bit. It's it's about our existing code on some of the duties and some of the things that we've been missing. Is like the full statement of receipts and payments must be read through to the government lobby the first meeting of month. And then also, all purchases are to be reported to council. And I just wanted to make sure that those things were on Jim's radar because he's walking into the position and these are things that council has been asking for a while now.
Thank you. Other discussion? All right, so we'll vote on the motion to authorize Mr. Burton to assist me in the administrative duties of the city administrator of Wood Creek and provide for a temporary salary increase of $1,000 retroactive to June 2nd. On favor, please signify by raising a hands high.
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. All right, so we'll move to item number 10, which is possible action on adopting a resolution retaining myself, Mayor DeBrasco, Mayor Portina, and Mayor Hines as Texas Regional Bank signatories and adding city staff member Jim Burton as a signatory on the account. And this is because we have a, I'm sorry. Get a motion first.
I move that we pass the resolution to add Mr. Burton as a signatory on the Texas Regional Banks.
A second.
So if I may, I mean, we're already on it. It's all checks have to have two signatures. The fund due accounting system that we recently adopted, uh, the electronic. But there are times when we would have to have a handwritten check. And and as volunteers, you know, we're not a rubber, is sort of a problem in the past. And if he's taking on the, taking on more of the administrative duties, then, you know, having him able to to sign with the bank and to do business with the bank would be helpful. So that's why there's resolutions on the table.
Okay. I disagree with this in that there, we're just a small town and normally you limit your signatories for the safety of your city. Now, we're going to get a city manager, they're going to be a signer. So you two are signers, then we're going to have another signer, and this will be a full signer. I don't, okay, so once we get a city manager, we will take his signarites away.
Yeah, it's always the city administrator, but right now we don't have a staff member. If Jeff and I fall off the face of the earth, there's literally not another.
There's nobody else, Jeff and I're signature authority. And we have had three signatures on the card for the last several years.
Okay, see, that, I thought you were just adding.
No, no, there have been three. We're trying to bring it back up to three. So are they usually, if I could, are they usually the mayor procting, the mayor and the city manager, or?
Or a candidate city secretary.
No, ma'am.
No, can't.
I'm only a, I'm only second approval for payroll. I do not have any signatory rights on the accounts.
Nobody can be.
No, but she serves a different role. She's the checks and balances, meaning she's supposed to manage the records and ensure everything is being kept properly.
She's a testing for the accuracy.
Yeah, so you can't also be the person.
Actually, that's one of the things that we've done pretty well for a small town. We have, we have those separations. You know, so so somebody that, you know, that does the payroll, you know, you know, can't you know, do it. So if you, if you, if you process the check, you can't, you know, sign it. So I don't process the check and then sign it, can't do that. You know, so so Taffy is AP and she is, she does checks, I can't do that. Yeah, we can't do that. So there are, there are defined limits and separations. I can't remember what that, what you would, where's the separation power, but it for the.
Division of labor or separation.
Yeah, but anyway.
So.
And then, and then.
Because somehow I just, I watched too much Frank TV and it's like, oh my gosh, our accounts are screwed up right now. I'm going to add more signatories and, yikes, but no. What are your controls on that? It's two signatures.
Two signatures on every single check.
Okay, what about requesting funding from one account to another? None of that, okay. Well, somebody has to do that.
Those are budget amendments.
No, I mean, well, when you run a state hall and then you run a hall, you run it on the end to that payroll.
Yes, the ATH transfer.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's yours, okay.
Not everybody has an ATH transfer, I do.
He and I.
Okay. And that would not be added. That's, this is purely signature. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
When the new city manager is hired, is he removed as signatory?
Yeah, there wouldn't be any need, right, because I don't want to make sense. The city manager should always have two or four of them back though. They're the chief of venture. And so, so yeah, when we have a permanent manager, which hopefully will be ready later. Because I don't like this job. So, so we'll be working hard on that and and get that done. And when that happens, then then that position will be. Right, any further discussion? In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Very much. Item number 11 has come back to us from, from staff, and this is, we have, this has come up before. Go ahead, Councilmember.
I move to adopt ordinance updating 156.057 fences, increasing side and back fence height limits to eight feet, including a reference to fence height in 156.009 under privacy fence.
A second.
Mayor? PNC has already held their public hearing on this issue. They've made the recommendation to council, which is reflected in this ordinance. Council has also already held their public hearing on this issue. This ordinance is the council action portion of the process. I support council taking an action to adopt this ordinance as it allows a greater freedom for our citizens to deal with their side and back fence height in our often uneven terrain. This increase also allows citizens to create higher sound buffers for those that back up to busy roads such as 12 or Dixie Flow Road. And by default, it may improve the sound quality for all citizens.
Good one. Yes. One of the primary objections previously, and I think it's gone, is that that no privacy type tents be constructed if it is either on golf course or a buddy of the golf course within the sightlines of, and that's a real big concern, is that people who live on the golf course won't have obstructed views of the golf course and vice versa, the golfers having obstructed views and you know where those walk and that going. My heart. So, yeah, this, I agree with you, Mr. Robert. This is the final step in doing this, and it has been looked over with a fine tooth comb, I believe. Right, and those golf course approaches are covered in the ordinance.
Never, never part of it.
No, that, that retained, you were concerned with. All right, any further discussion? We'll move on this one. On favor, please signify by raising a hands high. All right, so go down to bed. Item number 12, discuss and take possible actions to accept the 2024 budget and election calendar. All right, I move to be, that we accept the 2024 budget and elections, elections calendar. One aye?
Aye.
All right, this is, we did this every year. It's just the process. If you, if you look, there's also a word.
There's a handout.
Yeah, there's a handout, the sort of, the material in the, in the packet is is typical state. And so, and so, and so the city secretary condensed it for us and put it on to one sheet.
I didn't check the dates and things. Do you feel pretty confident that everything is accurate? Because we just saw that thing. So nobody's been able to review this actual calendar thing until today. So we feel really good about it, there's no.
Well, I checked it against, against key dates.
Okay.
You know, like, we know that we have to submit the budget to the city secretary. We know there's a deadline for that, of July 20. But Saturday, so maybe I'll be down here. But, but yeah, so, you know, key dates are there, and this is, you know, it's a calendar. It's guidelines, it's mileposts. I mean, we know what we, we have to do. This is just helpful. But, you know, you know, if, I really don't think if there was a typo instead of 2023 that we would be forced to go.
Well, this is what you're working off of, that's what I was saying.
For me, it's a guideline. Yeah.
Question. Are we adopting what's in the packet? Are we adopting this?
This is the guideline to what's in the packet. We're adopting the packet. You know, what's in the packet is what we're voting. This is just a handy guide to what's in there. And so, I mean, you could go in, this stuff is not going to change. I mean, you might find something in here and say, oh, this is August 16th, and this is August 8th. That doesn't change the rule. It's what's in here. You're, good question, though. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? So if not, we are voting to take, to accept the 2024 budget and election. On favor, please signify by raising a hands high. Any ayes? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move to number 13, discuss and take possible action to approve the 2024 Hayes County joint election agreement and the Hayes County contract for election services for the number. I move that we approve the 2024 Hayes election, joint election agreement and the 2024 slash 2025 Hayes County contract for election services for the number five, 2024 general election.
A second.
Second, Councilmember Richardson. Again, this is formality. We do this every year. We, we need the county to run the election course, and so we pay them a small sum and they do it, so. Any questions or discussion? I'll call the votes. On favor, please signify by raising a hands high. Most unanimously. Item 14 and related, discuss and take possible action to approve an ordinance ordering an election of the city Wood Creek for three at-large council member positions in that November 5th, 2026 general.
I move that we approve an ordinance ordering an election of the city Wood Creek for three at-large council member positions in the November 5th, 2024 general election.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Discussion?
I have a question, city attorney. Given that ordinances are meant to be longstanding and resolutions are meant to be temporary expressions of council's intent, is the format of it being an ordinance correct for this action?
That was approved by Charlie.
Yeah, we've seen it in both ways.
So you're giving it both ways of what you're saying?
Depending on, depending on the practice of the city client, passing it down as a resolution or as an ordinance. Most of the time it's ordinance.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? All right. We will vote on the ordinance ordering an election of the city Wood Creek for three at-large council member positions in the November 5th, 2024 general election. All in favor, please signify by raising a hands high.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous, and we'll move to item number 15. Discussing of a perfect action with one members and office, still advised.
I move to appoint Carolyn Nesbit as a full member of the ordinance review committee.
A second.
Mr. Mayor, can we include additionals? Yes, we're going to.
Could you repeat this, Karen, to which?
Carolyn Nesbit to ORC.
ORC.
And who seconded? I'm sorry, I was trying to get through the. Great, thank you. All right, all in favor of appointing Carolyn Nesbit as regular member of ORC? Please say so by raising a hands high.
Aye.
Great, perfect. Yes, sir. I, moving, we would point Judy Newton to the tree board. She has some really good qualifications, one being that she's been a master gardener. Is extremely interested in these particular, this particular committee. She did a great job.
A second.
A second.
All right, any further discussion on she, she'll be good. All in favor of appointing Newton to the tree board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
I move to appoint Carson Bloodsoe to the ordinance review committee.
Second.
That you most.
Yeah. Can I ask that you reconsider that? Because Carson is on the planning and zoning currently. I'm concerned about a forum on both of those boards, given like there would be three members. It should, it's a personal concern. I'm not saying we, that we have no rules against it. We have nothing prohibiting it. And they aren't always dealing with the same topics, meaning ordinance review committee, all ordinances, planning and zoning is just literally land usage, given the, I don't know, I just, I worried about it because I, I'm looking at the app of things. I was like, oh no.
That selection was made because I was informed that Mr. Scott was only going to be on the privacy record board rather than.
We call that a second?
She already had a second.
I'm sorry, you seconded?
Miss Bailey.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, missed that. All right, so the motion is to place Carson Bloodsoe on ORC. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Ms. Russell Scott to the alternate position in parks and recreation.
A second.
So your motion was as moved, move as stated. It's what your motion is, because he.
I would request an emotion. I can, I can motion if I like, but I just like to.
I move that Mayor Rasko appoints Russell Scott as the alternate position on the privacy record board.
I'll second.
For what it's worth, Mr. Scott served in a similar position in Lightway and from what I understand, just to, he's already stepped up big time for us under the 40th and rifre planning. He's going to be, going to be a great addition and going to talk to him about some of the opportunities. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Right, thank you. Any other?
You have an alternate member who can be moved up to regular member if you had wanted to do that. But the motion was made to give it full, remember?
Yeah, and there's an alternate on ORC, but Mr. Scott's not interested anymore. That moves that, and then there is a PNC vacancy now, but it's not on here, so we can't talk about it.
Right, so, okay. We don't have any application for PNC due. These are all, these are.
This poll was as of last Friday. I'm sorry, as of Friday before.
Yeah.
So, but we're going to have to go.
All right, then our work there is done. All right, we have, we have several items on financial statements, 16 through 21. And before we go into that, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Betty.
Okay. Sorry to do this again, but we cannot recognize those statements. They are incorrect. And hopefully I can get right on those and we will be able to bring them together. But it's, it's going to take some serious work. But they are incorrect, and it would be wrong to accept them at this point in time.
That's a city attorney question. When we accept financial statements, are we only accepting that they were reported to us? Or are we accepting the accuracy in the documents?
I'm going to say that you're accepting the accuracy, because if they change, they're going to have to come back to you. So you're accepting what is in them.
Okay. Because we keep moving the. Because there's. keep moving because there's, there's so many documents. It was like a big document dump and. Yeah.
I wanted to ask about the correct procedure here. We postponed this meeting the last time when we set a date. If I were to just postpone indefinitely, that removes that date requirement. Is that accurate? Would that be the appropriate motion at this time?
I believe you're correct.
I move to postpone items sixteen through twenty-four indefinitely.
Thank you.
I second. Oh, well, she's second, sir.
Yeah.
You were first?
Well, she's first, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so the motion is to postpone indefinitely by Mayor Tim Hines, item sixteen through twenty-four. And seconded by council member. All right. Any summary on that? All right, we'll call vote. All in favor of postponing indefinitely, if you can say aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so that brings us to item number twenty-five. And I will read the items here. First item is going back to Camilla Kitz. Email, comment. Says I respectfully request that it be read with the agenda item number twenty-five. Please read this in the meeting so it is included in the minutes. I would like to take this opportunity to commend the city secretary Suzanne McKenzie for her hard work and dedication to the city board group. She is knowledgeable with regard to ordinances and many subjects. She has supreme customer service skills. I do not know her well on a personal basis, however, considering the extreme weather events our city has endured beginning the winter storm of February twenty twenty-two and continuing through the time period of billiard-sized billiard ball-sized hailstorm in winds of May ninth, twenty twenty-four. This latest, latest effort appeared seamless. I'm sure it was a nightmare from city hall's perspective. In addition to other duties that are under her purview, attention she gives the residents of the city is refreshing and typically accurate and knows ordered directly to find the answer if she isn't in the position to find it for you. The plan mainly goes into citywide garage sale, the winter storm damage shipping station that she helped organize and was physically on site to assist with questions, directions to citizens, et cetera. The prompted diligent organization that simultaneously happened within three days of the May ninth storm. Coordinating HOW to again picking up limbs so quickly to restore the city back to something of normality with other another unprecedented storm out of mother nature. I have been important to hold a position of some sort on the overlooked property owners association board since approximately May twenty twenty. In that time, I've had several occasions to seek direction from city hall and have rarely been not quickly answered by the city secretary in minutes, hours, and certainly not days. Ms. McKenzie has comfortably while on bereavement leave while having stayed checked her office messages and called me back about an issue concerning the common areas of the overlook with regard to oaks. And at other times I have called her while she was measuring and marking trees on properties slated for a building permit that required our most valuable resource of oaks in our community in order to expedite a building permit. An incident involving an abandoned car in front of a resident's garage that was there for thirty-six hours, she directed me to Hayes County. Dunk and box sightings close to elder resident homes or hundred decks that behaved as suspected, directing me to animal control. Her endless hours at city hall late at night working prior to council meetings, not because she boasts or complains about the work or the hours, but because I was there when she was leaving sometimes after nine P M while I was teaching my teenage son to tear a little park in the city hall lot. She still has, she was still friendly after, I'm assuming, a ten-hour day, throwing unadvised reports in person for various reasons, taking minutes. As a former legal secretary of an offsite law firm in Dallas, I understand the need for customer service and customers always right mentality. The customer is always right mentality. That subjects you to your worst days and best days when you feel you have served your community well. I've never heard a snark or unkind word or rarely not been able to see the smile on her face or in the sound of her voice when she answered the phone. Again, I've been meaning to do this before now, but seeing this on the agenda number twenty-five opened the opportunity for her to be recognized as well as other members of the city hall that I don't have contact with. Thank you all. I thank you all. Thank you to all of you. I thank you all. Respectfully, Camilla Shelburne, resident. And this is following additional comments from Robin Dow who says, I would also like to describe for item, agenda item twenty-five. In general, I find all the agenda items are big, but this one in particular, I'm not sure what is being evaluated. However, I hope it is to acknowledge what a great job she does. Anytime I need to reach out, she's very helpful. Recent example of the community with the garage sale and cleanup of the recent hailstorm. I was impressed and thankful for how quickly the cleanup and picking up of branches was organized. Prior to that, I was contacted for the road resurfacing. The communication was good and my community over the overlook had many questions. I called several times and was able to get my questions answered. Suzanne is always available and very approachable and helpful. Thanks Suzanne. Thank you, city council, respectfully, Robin Dow. And finally, Lorraine Taylor. Taylor, I'm sure. And again, please read this comment at item number twenty-five. Of the past time of our residents over forty years, Suzanne has been the only person that listened and resolved our concerns. Wood Creek has been a wonderful place to live. Suzanne has made it better. Other public comments?
And may I was. Morning.
Yes.
Ready? This is on item twenty-five, evaluation of city secretary and possible action related there to you. I'm making this public comment because I'm unsure of the goal of this agenda item. I see three possibilities. It could, it could either be the acceptance of the performance review that my previous supervisor, former city manager Kevin Rule completed on April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Or unofficial documents that were not included in the city's official employment official employment file, whether before or after Kevin's departure on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. That will try to be read into record as part of the completed and signed performance review. Or number three, my duties are expanding to include what is written inside the Texas local government code. The city secretary's office is the oldest profession, I'm sorry, the oldest public profession and the only municipal employee required by state statute. This office is a fast-paced office that plays a significant role in city government. The city secretary serves as an act, as a public access point between Wood Creek residents and the city government, working to enhance transparency and accessibility for members of the public and the local government. The city secretary's office is at forefront of the legislative and administrative processes and performance tasks as provided by Texas state law. Many people do not know what a city secretary does on a regular basis, so I'll take a minute to quote portions of the Texas local government code. This is section twenty-two point oh seven, three of y'all, monorail later. Attend the meetings of the governing body, engross all laws, resolution ordinances, keep the corporate seal, take charge and maintain the records of the governing body, countersign commissions issued to municipal officers, prepare notices required under regulations or ordinance of the municipality. The secretary shall also draw the warrants of the treasurer, countersign the warrants, and keep a record. The secretary serves as the general accountant of the municipality and shall keep regular accounts of the municipal receipts and disbursements. That's a long one, so I'm going to skip the rest. The city shall keep a register of bonds and bills issued by the municipality. The city should, the secretary shall carefully keep off contracts made by the governing bodies. The secretary shall perform all of their duties required by law, ordinance, resolution, or order of the governing body. Next is a quick report of what I've been doing as Wood Creek city secretary from April twenty-two to today. Legislative-related duties. Working with the city manager and the city council in its legislative capacity to prepare and post fifty-eight agendas in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, including attending fifty-eight city council meetings totaling two hundred and sixty-one hours. One hundred and forty-nine agenda packets totaling not, I'm sorry. One hundred and forty-nine agenda packets, not including this agenda packet preparation, totaling a total of an estimated hundred and thirty-one hours for one person, including the taking and preparing events for these same meetings. In addition to attesting approving minutes, I've also attested to the mayor's signature on fifty ordinances, fifty-four proclamations, and resolutions to date. The city secretary has also attended and provided primary support to the city's advisory boards, which includes a total of a hundred and thirty-four agendas and minute taking. Again, this is over a two-year period. Section two, city records management officer. There's a reference to a local government code. In nineteen ninety-five, the reference, I'm sorry, the Wood Creek, city of Wood Creek created their first records management program. In two thousand and nineteen, the city performed its first records purge in accordance with the Texas State Library retention schedules. In twenty twenty-four, the city secretary is currently coing additional records for destruction as we have run out of storage space in our filing cabinets. All records will be digitized and organized according to the state law and Texas State Library. The total record that our project will abide by all legal destruction procedures and will be documented accordingly. Elections officer. The city secretary is also the city's election officer and must have knowledge of and perform duties under the Texas Election Code, Tax Code, and Local Government Code. The list below is not all inclusive. There are several codes that are listed. I have been fortunate to coordinate the twenty twenty-two city council and road on election as well as the second city council election in twenty twenty-three. Section four, Texas, city, city Texas alcohol beverage commission applications. There's a T A B C code sixty-one dot thirty-seven. The city secretary must certify all Texas alcohol beverage commission applications on behalf of the city, whether they are new applications or renewals. Before the city secretary signs an application or renewal, the applicant must get approval from the code administrator to ensure that other requirements are met. Number five, city council advisory boards and commissions. The city secretary, as records management officer, maintains the boards, panels, and commissions appointments. Terms of office require documents and applications. A new volunteer interest form and application were developed in twenty twenty-three and guiding books and a webpage were created. Number six, other regular duties of the secretary. Some of the other duties of the city secretary's office performs is to conduct council relations support, posting all legal notices, publish and post public hearing notices, and attend a variety of meetings such as neighborhood town halls, inquire notices for the city manager and mayoral kitchen cabinets and coffees. Number seven, additional duties performed by the secretary due to staff changes. April four, twenty twenty-two, my first day as city secretary. April twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, resignation of the code inspector. May twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, resignation of the city manager Brent Lewis. December twenty twenty-two, new city manager Kevin Rule was hired. August twenty twenty-three, code administrator Jim Burton was hired. May twenty twenty-four, city manager Kevin Rule resigned. Through all this change management process, the city secretary's, city secretary's office accepted these duties when necessary to ensure that all city operations and new staff contractors could be hired as replacements. Number eight, fiscal dedication to the city. During my two-plus years of tenure with the city, I've been able to collect twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars, nineteen cents in outstanding fees from the Oaks and income from stockholder orders of forty-five hundred dollars. I've also been successful in saving the city additional monies by renegotiating vendor contracts and converting monthly billing into annual billing with, for example, and not limited to Xerox, Amazon, Hot IT, and Pitney Bowes in the amount of sixty-seven hundred dollars. In total, the city has gained approximately thirty-one thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and nineteen cents in income to date through the past two years. Training. Throughout my tenure, I have attended three hundred and twenty-seven hours of training related to city elections, the Public Information Act. Courses offered by the Texas Municipal Clerks Association and other learning opportunities to improve relations between city staff and council. I most recently became certified as an H R officer of one through the Society for Human Resource Management. I am also currently enrolled in and I'm studying to become a certified professional in human resources. Note, just because Wood Creek does not have a human resource department that does not negate the requirement of following Texas employment labor laws and other federal labor laws. I'm also studying to become a certified city secretary through Texas, through the Texas Municipal Clerks Program. Number ten, administrative projects and procedures through the city. In addition to records management, I work with our legal team to create templates for city ordinances, new revisions, proclamations, and resolutions, as our earlier formats were inconsistent and were not easily identifiable until reading down into the body of the document. Processes and projects in progress, but not all inclusive. Through one of my T C M A's, Texas Municipal Clerk Association trainings, I found out about a rolling agenda, and Jeff loved it. That keeps track of reoccurring annual activities. I've also created an ordinance tracker that is used when the legal team creates and edits an ordinance and can now easier reference all versions that can be revoked in the where as statements at the beginning of each ordinance. An agenda tracker is also in the works to ensure the carryover of items that were not discussed in various meetings. And although I'm proud of the projects listed above, I have also created our first employee handbook for the city, including acknowledgement statements required by law and several other templates and documents that would bring the city into compliance with employment labor laws, thereby protecting the city. In conclusion, I wanted to make sure that everyone here and whoever watches via Zoom understands the role of the city secretary's office. I love being able to streamline and organize the city secretary's office, being able to place procedures in place for efficiency tracking and transparency. And I, I wanted to say that it has been my desire, my obligation and duty. I wanted to say it has been my desire, obligation, and duty to fulfill the duties of the city secretary position based on the statutes and laws of the state of Texas. I have done this through official and unofficial capacities. As a city official, I've coordinated relief and cleanup efforts after the storm events twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, and we have another one, with waste connections and other vendors to ensure the true plan of our city. I've also implemented both of our citywide garage sales that was immediately followed by a curbside bulk pickup or bulk, a curbside pickup of bulk items the following weekend. As a resident, I have aided citizens with property cleanup post-weather events, made water and food deliveries, and ensured that my name, my all neighbors of all ages are taken care of. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this document, I am hoping for a positive outcome from this agenda item as oops, typo. As a reminder, it is explicitly stated in a job description, unless it is explicitly stated in a job description or contractual agreement, annual performance reviews are done on an annual basis. But mostly I want all of the residents to know. I want all of the residents to know that I love your unique personalities and the way you have welcomed me with open arms into Wood Creek, both as a resident and then a city secretary.
Thank you.
Thank you. That won't do it back.
Yes.
I move to direct the city attorney to draft a resolution for termination of employment based on a lack of confidence for the city secretary's permission.
I second. Right, oh, the executive session?
We can offer it. We've already offered it once. I move to go to executive session under the personnel exemption under the Texas Open Meetings Act.
I do have a right under the.
I'm asking legal questions from our city attorney. I'm asking legal questions from our city attorney.
But I have stated.
Seven one, not personnel. Consultation with attorney Wood Gander, oh, seven one, she's definitely seven.
I called one for personnel, because Dan has the ability to decline it at this time.
Right. Um, and in fact, I've objected already and statute five five one dot oh seven four authorizes a municipal officer to request a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am, that's after the resolution is drafted, should that vote proceed? Are we going into executive session or not? Are you calling your executive session for legal questions or not?
Yes, I've been trying to.
Okay, so we're going to executive session on oh, seven, one, for legal counsel. Correct. Um, as I've got nine, oh, two.
So unfortunately, that means everyone has to exit.
Before we will go.
Are we going?
If you need to follow a job, you know, of course.
We'll come back, we don't make any decisions in executive session. And so when we come back, any votes will happen.
I'm sorry.
All right, the, um, coming back in the, in the open, in the session at nine, about nine thirteen. And no, actually, I think on the executive session, um, we're back to item number twenty-five. There's a motion on the floor to request the city attorney prepare a reservation of termination of the city secretary.
Based on lack of confidence.
They, uh, yeah, on lack of confidence. And by Mayor for Dan Heinz, segmented by Councilmember Berman. And the discussion on the call, but, and.
You have a right to ask questions if you want, I'm just, I can, I can speak more if you'd like to, but.
Can I have a little bit more input on just, you know, my interactions with Suzanne? Have been limited to the past six months and, um, they've been positive, so I, I would just like some more feedback from other council members as far as.
Um, I've worked with Suzanne from the beginning. Um, I was on the team that hired her. Um, we were, we were happy to get a local person who could learn the role and work herself into it. She had some human resources background and, and that's probably helpful. Um, however, it's not part of the city secretary responsibilities on the job description. Um, to, you know, took it on and has been helpful in, in a lot of cases. Um, you know, but, uh, but, but also kind of sort of, it's, uh, there, there've been some issues where they just were taking too much control, trying to take, um, too much of that, that was just not really in her, in her bed with. So, you know, that's a, that's a problem on that. And, and I'm telling you that, you know, with the, um, the charters now twice of, uh, city managers, um, which kind of leave me as mayor in a position where, you know, we've got to get things done. Um, I've had, um, put back or opened defiance. Um, in this most recent case, um, a, uh, an email went out to all city contractors from Ms. McKenzie saying, you know, I have a point of contact, you know, everything goes for me. Um, I was not talked to, I was not talked to, I, um, would have, would have been great. But anyway, so we've got contractors that I'm trying to get some work done with that won't talk to me because I don't have, um, permission, um, for saying, well, that was way out of her scope. It wasn't, it was, there's nothing in her job description that says, you know, I take over if the city manager. So it's been frustrating again. Um, I would have hoped that, you know, after the first time, um, we would have, you know, figured something out about that and it's been a problem again. We've had, um, problems in, well, accuracy of, you know, postings, uh, timeliness of postings. Um, and it's like, I, I, the, the, the confidence thing is that if she had, you know, just focused on the, the role of the city secretary um, in the job description and just stayed in that lane, you know, probably wouldn't be having the discussion. It's that, you know, she wants to manage the other employees, um, and, and take them on. It's not, it's not her role, she has no administrative authority in her job description at all, nobody reports to her. Um, I know that I've had, I've had feedback from previous employees, um, previous city manager, um, that, uh, that, you know, there's work to be done. Um, and if you, if you review, um, city manager rules evaluation, which should, this should have been at least her second one. Um, it was her first, her two years, so to apologize for that. Um, but it's average, you know, it's like threes mostly and a couple of fours. And, and the comments are trying to be constructive, but, um, this is, it's, it, the, I'm here like every day and I have been here every day. Um, it is, um, it's not a very pleasant environment all the time. I've asked for several things, like for, for instance, on the, on the whole, kind of the, the email that went out to the contractors saying that, you know, she is the point of contact. I wrote and specifically requested that send it out to the same thing that says, okay, now we've got, you know, the mayor taking administrative responsibilities, he will be your point of contact. I asked her to send that out and copy me on it, so I haven't seen that. Uh, it's, it's just like little things that I don't know if it's open defiance. I don't know, I don't know, you know, what I did, but it's just like, I, I, I routinely ask for things that just don't get, um, just don't get reformed. And, you know, that's, we're not, that just sort of breaks my confidence in that she can, she can assist, you know, as asked. And so that, you know, and, you know, the, the role of the council is to, you are the employers, you know, of, of any city officer. The only, only real city officer we have is a city secretary. The city manager is a, is an appointed role. I mean, they serve in an officer role, but they're not a state. We, we, we went chapter twenty-two and not chapter twenty-five, which means that we can decide to, to, uh, bring on a city manager, but it's not at the department, whereas chapter twenty-five requires a city manager. Um, so we, we have a city manager by choice, not by, by mandate. Um, but, you know, it's, 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 it can be frustrating to be in this position and not have the full support of the entire staff. And I just, it, and I have.
Okay, well, I can kind of come at a different direction. Um, I was city secretary to before me, Peggy, and we were the whole shebang, you know? And I, even in preparing for this discussion, I looked at other communities and very often the city secretary is fairly powerful position and they are administrative over a lot of things. And there may have just been some misunderstanding about that because we did pass that resolution that allowed you to take over in case of the city manager. Um, what I appreciate with Suzanne is there's continuity. You know, our city gets a little reputation for being a little toxic or losing people. And at least she's been here and she's very professional. And somewhere I harken back to this, all of us work for the citizens, the taxpayers, and you will find hands down, the citizens love Suzanne. She is always respectful. And so maybe if she needed some alteration to say, hey, mayor needs it level or whatever, this is a correctable thing, but what she does, she pleases the citizens. She's a bright light, she's professional, she knows what's going on. We need to have, start encouraging a team effort. And, um, one, one of my present, kind of a, of our last city manager, who I love in other ways, he was supposed to be managing in steam and he didn't seem to. There seemed to be different entities all doing their best thing and all a little competitive with each other. So I think, my opinion is, we have a great asset. Maybe we need to hone some edges or set down some rules, but we ultimately have someone who works for the people, just like what council member do. And, um, and that makes for a very fine asset.
Thank you. So, as I've kind of mentioned before, it doesn't, if you get to know me at all and kind of see them, pretty detailed order, I'm probably not going to continue with Liam, I'm sorry. But where I often am looking are, um, I guess I'm just gonna go straight forward. So there's been problems with council will adopt an ordinance and staff will deny that it counts and not process it. And that's a changing, so again, when I previously referred to state law, no one can change a council action by council itself. And, um, another big responsibility, I mean, very clearly stated in state law is that our budget is posted on our website with very specific guidelines of what's supposed to be on those documents. And today, our last budget is still on our website. And I brought this to staff's notice. And it's like you could literally go on right now and it's not there. What's there is a proposed budget. The adopted budget and the proposed budget are very different things. So that, I don't know if you've ever been watching me, every time we have minutes, I'm, I don't just automate, I have to read every single thing. I watch the videos just to make sure that what's being said here is actually what's being said there. Because there's been issues with the minutes continuously. Um, and I don't really want to be doing that job personally. I want to know, okay, I'll read it and look through it, but I don't want to have to really double like watch the video and read the minutes to make sure that those two things match. Personally, I, we get along, I really like her as a person. Now, maybe what you're suggesting is there's another different role. But I don't think it's the city secretary. There's too much state regulation, there's too, that we require be done. That's.
Mr. Henry. Uh, I rarely, um, talk about whatever I did in the past as far as my professional life is concerned. Uh, I worked as a civil service employee for twenty-six years. And in that time, I dealt with, uh, for fourteen years that I was supervisor, and I dealt with, uh, employees, basically. I think got out of the realm of working with people for the most part and then getting with employees. And in working with employees, one of the things that you learn is the, the basic steps that are required when you have a problem or perceived problem with a particular individual. Doesn't matter who they are or what the problem is, there is a process that has gone through in order to take the next step. Now, they were very, very protected and even the most egregious thing that occurred usually did not come up with termination, which is not the point here. The point is, is that there were steps that were taken, um, not just a resolution, but specific steps with those individuals to deal with a particular situation. The fact that there hasn't been an evaluation done in the last twenty-four months or so, um, is, that is not Suzanne's fault, that's, that's Kevin's. And Kevin, I don't even know if he knew he was supposed to do that or not. But the point is, is that, just like, I definitely was requesting, I'm sorry. But the point is, is that, um, it wasn't done. And many of these, uh, points that have been brought up hadn't been addressed prior to this. This is the first time they've been addressed. And on the first time they've been addressed, the, the suggestion is, is that she's fired. There's no in-between. And, um, I think that we're dealing with an individual that is humble enough to say, you know, maybe there's one, some of these things weren't absolutely perfect. But given the opportunity, I think that a lot of those things, if they actually are there, could be, um, uh, remediated and fixed. So to, to get rid of such a valuable asset to this city, and as said, I, I'm sure we could line up people out the door who would tell you what they think of Suzanne McKenzie, that, uh, they would know that, that she has enough integrity, that she would go forward and do things perhaps a little differently as this city council would want. And that she would give him that, give the proper due process going down the line uh, based on what we've, uh, seen. And what she said, those were just words, but see, she's backed a lot of those other actions also as far as some of the things that she's done in the last two years. The burden, Miles?
So first off, let's be really clear what's happening tonight. We're just asking an attorney to draft a resolution. That is your vote. The vote does not determine an employee. Um, this discussion is valid and probably would be more appropriate on that date when the resolution came back, which is why I wasn't offering a lot of information. Um, maybe you're not aware of the process, but this is the due process for a municipal employee, actually. We are giving it. This is the notice. Um, with that in mind, um, this isn't personal. Okay, and there are things you have done really well around the office that we could acknowledge here tonight. There has also been issues. With that in mind, there are multiple write-up and complaints submitted for her file. I have submitted some personally. Um, there have been many, many issues with records management and lots of errors and minutes, uh, things posted incorrectly, having to fix that over and over, things not being ready for meetings when you have volunteers coming up here to spend their time to review items and they're not prepared. With that in mind, there's also been multiple emotional outbursts that I witnessed where, uh, yelling is occurring in the office, slamming of doors, storming out of the office. These are unprofessional behaviors, period, not acceptable. I would have lost my job that day if I was employed as a teacher still. That is termination on sight. This is the due process for this position. With that in mind, there are multiple violations of policies in place, specifically concerning the agenda as recent as last week. Um, there are possible cancellations of city meetings due to poor record keeping, unnecessary cancellations of state regulated boards due to poor record management. There is favoritism among council members. Certain council members are often prepared individual packets that are set at their desks alone, when these are public records that all council members should have. During the retreat, which was a collective, staff and advisory body and council member, uh, sort of come to the table moment where we all gave reviews of each other. The reviews of Suzanne McKenzie were that there's gossiping in the office about residents, preferential treatment of residents, preferential treatment of council members, obstruction of city business due to preferential personal things driving. due to preferential, personal things driving city business occurring at an appropriate pace. Meaning this was supposed to come up at the next meeting. It doesn't. It disappears. We don't know why. We know why. Uh, there's private videotaping of other employees occurring even after being asked not to multiple times. There are just many things we could go on here. Personally, I have a lack of competence in this person's ability to perform this specific job. As I said, it's not personal. It's not about whether I like them or whether or not they're nice to me when I come into office. It's are they doing this job and doing it well and managing their time well? I would argue staying till nine PM as a salary position is not appropriate. That means you have not managed your time well and done this job well when one woman was able to do it for nearly two decades. That says something. This entire packet here has many, many questionable things in it. For example, counting stop work orders and permits and things like that as income is actually not appropriate at all. And we should never be caught saying that because money taken on permits can't be considered income and you cannot make income from permits. So that's a problem. With that in mind, you know, none of these were individual efforts. A lot of this, there was multiple people involved, all the cleanups, all of that stuff had multiple people involved. And frankly, there is still some concern over the way the time is spent, you know, um. This is on city paper. This is a city resource used for a public comment. This is, this is what I'm talking about. I'm not sure we are managing our time wisely. I'm not sure this is the right fit anymore. I'm not saying all of the last couple of years have been bad, but I do have significant concerns at this point, which is why I brought this up. So all we are voting on tonight is a resolution. This is the due process for a municipal officer. What happens then is that resolution would come back at a future meeting and that municipal officer is not offered a public hearing. They're offered a public meeting where they may have a public comment. They may have other people to come speak and support of them. There might be other people that bring forth their complaints. But it will occur in a public meeting. And all council members here and elected, you know, the whole elected body will have a chance to communicate to the lawyer concerns should they be there. And those would be addressed at that time. So that is why I brought this item forward. Because, and I don't take it lightly. I'm employing people. I've managed businesses. I support myself, I have a family and I get it. Money is hard. Jobs are a big deal. I don't take any of this lightly. But I do believe we've reached an impasse where specifically at this point in time, there has been very real obstruction of city business unnecessarily and outside of what is appropriate for the world.
Right. Thank you. Let's wrap, wrap it up. I think, um, I think we'll do a roll call of the, um, the motion to, um, request the resolution, resolution of termination for lack of competence for the city secretary. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Pretend, Governor Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Lana Bailey.
No.
Councilmember Chris Garrett.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
No.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
All right, motion passes. Three votes to two. Um, asking the city attorney to move forward on the resolutions, uh, work with her immediately. So let's hear any council recommendations for the items of the next regular council meeting?
Well, the resolution for termination of the tenant, it would be right. There is potentially going to be some, uh, bid proposals for consideration on the rainwater collection. If the timing worked out appropriately through the water task force and everything, but that is coming up. Oh, and the Parview Triangle, the CYJ volunteers' time is going to be available. And so, uh, we're going to start, uh, probably working up, not Parview Triangle, sorry, the triangle. The beautification project. I meant to say we did one at Parview. We were supposed to do one on Southern South Circle, city manager rule. Never acted on all the materials given to him for that. And so, uh, we allocated that mon, money to go to the triangle, if y'all remember that. So, uh, there's a small garden set to be placed. So the final plans for that need to come back to be handled for a group call. We've got CYJ volunteers allocated to assist with some of the, that initial work that we could do. So that final design, um, will come. And now I don't know why I had Becky just in my head. She wrote me an email saying she could meet with me. So Becky Denton and Claire Palmer, the master nationalists involved with the Alexa Park Butterfly Garden thing. I've asked for their counsel on this as well. Um, to get just kind of a final look see on it and say, you know, yeah, this is great. It keeps with the character and it's all the important topics. Um, and that's all I can think of right now.
Understood. I'm, I, I have one more.
I'd like to, uh, bring everybody up to date in the infrastructure mobility panel.
Just add that as an I N, I N report. If I could, um, we were already planning on doing some update as far as, uh, additional parks. So we have that report as well.
Can we, can I ask that you use the, uh, official submission processes to submit your items in the future? Because staff had a really hard time compiling the packet and we were trying to get ahold of you all week for the parks for items that were in this packet and we couldn't get you. And so we were unclear what was supposed to go where staff was trying to fill out your item for you. Um, so if you could just use the official submission procedures in the future.
I can help you with that, but I didn't, I'm sure.
And if you could bring forward the most recent parks recommendation. Um, I'm, if I may, I'm probably going to be bringing some candidates either. Oh, we're talking in the second June meeting here. I'm in July, sir.
Um, one of the items would be, um, discussing the removal of Jake Buckner from the tree board of her lack of attendance. Uh, and then the other thing would be recommending, uh, council approved and, uh, staff hire certified oak will qualify arborist, not as like, not the odd staff, arborist, but just to do a one-time assessment of oak wood on, um, existing city property. Because the, what we got from Paul Rocky was a little outdated. We thought we were going to pass something more current and we just need an arborist to just tell me badly what, what is happening so we can, uh, make sense for that.
Um, and we'll probably have, uh, maybe some updates on the birds that we presume.
Well, and then if, if we, if I get there, I'm sorry, financial statement. That will be my life in it too. Okay.
All right. All right, then. Is there, are there any announcements?
If there's anything, anything you want.
No, I realize we're talking about the next June meeting. I'm, my thing is July.
An offense? Fourth of July parade.
Fourth of July parade, Fourth of July fireworks spectacular with Bob Livingston. Um, is that flyer over there? That was just, um, that was just sent to us today, um, from, uh, from Lee and thirty with Wimberly. Um, so that's, uh, that's sort of the.
And guess what? Mayor Rasco solicited five thousand dollars in donations to cover the cost of our torchon of the VFW thing. So guess what? How many are?
We actually got it in time to get under flyers, Aqua and Infinity Grouping. Um, that does not mean that we will not accept the petition. But, uh, but, um, yeah, five thousand.
Motion to adjourn.
My second.
All right, here's our end of the term, man. Uh, nine forty-one.